Aloha and welcome to the thirty-third meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Before we get into formal business, we have a brief announcement to make to our licensees as well as all representatives who are online as well as present here in the galley. We unfortunately Vice Chair Lee has submitted his resignation to the commission effective Monday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. He has served as a commissioner since two thousand and sixteen and we will deeply miss Vice Chair Lee and thank him for his service to the commission. We are, we will be in the process of getting another, the mayor is in the process of appointing another commissioner at this time, so be patient with us. And commissioners, I'll open it up if you guys have any favorable thoughts or memories.
Chair, I'll echo your sentiment that Vice Chair Lee will be missed on this commission. He brought a different perspective and I do think the strength of a board of commissioners is defined by the diversity of commissioners. So to the extent we are at a loss and hopefully his replacement has equal skill set and impartiality and can also add value to this collective body.
I will also say that I'm going to miss Commissioner Lee's perspective and voice on the commission. I'm disappointed that he decided to resign. It's very hard to find good people to serve in a volunteer capacity. This takes a lot of time and a lot of work on our part, so I understand his departure, but he is gonna be sorely missed. And I wish that circumstances had been different so that he could have remained on the commission for the length of his term.
I'll echo all the other commissioners. I have not been able to work with commissioners there as long as they have, but the short time that I did spend working with him was eye-opening on the other perspectives to see what other things we needed to look at besides just what I would think would need to be seen. So he'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, commissioners, and maybe the public will see as well that we are a very tight group of body, I mean group of individuals, and we really do value those work relationships. But having said that, we do have business to take care of. It is Thursday, so hopefully Commissioner Lee will be, or Vice Chair Lee will be in his capacity and God knows what he's doing today on Thursday, but good luck to him. Commissioners, I believe we have some minutes to approve.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the twenty-eighth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the regular minutes of the twenty-eighth meeting as previously circulated. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye. The regular minutes of the twenty-eighth meeting as previously circulated is approved. Moving into public hearings. Sure, okay, we're gonna take a short recess due to technical difficulties, so we'll be right back. Okay, we are back on the record. Thank you for allowing us that short recess, we were experiencing technical difficulties. I'm assuming everybody out there can hear us, right? Not yet, you can hear me? Okay, very good, very good. Okay, let's recall the matter. We're gonna call agenda item number one, application number two zero dash two one five seven zero from Kotiki LLC. Do we have Mr. Shinzato here?
Mr. Nishiyoka.
For agenda item number one? Is that the light? Oh, there it is. Okay, go ahead now. Yes.
Again, good afternoon, Chair. Members of the commission, very pleased you're here. On behalf of the, my left is Sam Monahan, who is a member now. We have a, we have a supplemental investigative report from Investigator Perez. We have no, this is number changes, but this will.
Do we have a testifier? We do. Okay. We, Mr. Nishiyoka, we have a testifier here present with us, so we're gonna bring this gentleman in.
Sir, can I swear you in, please? Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Leonard Nicolai. I have a twenty-seven percent ownership in a fifteen-unit apartment building, a cooperative. And in the past, we have experienced loud amplified music coming from the Kotiki Bar when they had a birthday party, weddings, or so on. Now I understand that we will have this kind of entertainment or loud amplified music every night up to ten o'clock. And I'm here to testify on behalf of about thirty people who live in our building who consider the loud noisy music that we have had in the past and now will be experiencing on a daily basis. I'm trying to prevent it.
Thank you for the record. Your written testimony was, copies were provided to the members of the commission.
Commissioners, do you guys have any questions for Mr. Nicolai?
Mr. Nicolai, how far is your building from the proposed licensed premises?
Two hundred feet Makai of the Kotiki Bar. The Kotiki Bar borders on Prince Edward Street and Koa Avenue, Makai, one block Makai, is where our building is located.
What is the latest you've heard what you believe to be amplified music coming from?
It happens rarely.
From, coming from the?
From the Kotiki Bar. Happens rarely at special parties, but now I understand we will be having it on a daily basis.
My question is, what's the latest you've heard noise coming from?
I would say about months ago.
No, what time of night or morning?
Oh, that was about eight o'clock, up to ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yeah.
Up to ten o'clock, yes.
Any other questions from Mr. Nicolai? Mr. Nicolai, we will take your testimony into consideration as well as your letter of protest.
Thank you. Can I go?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Nishiyoka, having heard of Mr. Nicolai's testimony, and I know you don't, you probably don't have a copy of his letter, but may he respond to you?
Chair, I was never see, I believe I saw a letter forwarded to Mr. Shinzato to my phone as we were waiting for the meeting to restart. I did take a look at it. Hearing Mr. Nicolai, testimony was very good, came up very spotty. My understanding, they live in a building two hundred feet Makai of the current property that Kotiki is located in. If that is correct, I, I'm just seeking verification if what I heard was correct.
Yes, there, and I believe because this was not able to be put in the, on the agenda, this was given to, a copy was given to us right before today's hearing. I believe we need to read it into the record. This is on behalf of, they're at the Capri Apartments Limited, twenty-four twelve Koa Avenue, Honolulu nine six eight one five. It's dated March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We, the owners of Capri Apartments Limited, which is a cooperative apartment building, protest against the establishment of amplified music coming from Kotiki Bar located at twenty-four twenty-five Kuhio Avenue. On several occasions in the past, such amplified music performed at birthday parties, et cetera, have caused a severe disturbance to the occupants of our building. We request that no permit be issued to the Kotiki Bar to play amplified music. And it is signed by three separate individuals with their apartment numbers noted, and it will be entered into the public record. Mr. Nishiyoka, what's your plan for noise mitigation?
Well, first of all, to correct the record, I was gonna say bar is, bar is a restaurant. I was discussing the matter with Mr. Monahan, and some Monahan will also comment, but one thing to point out that the hotel, in the past ten years, on every Thursday, has had music here with no complaints. This is before Kotiki was ever in existence in the current location. Since Kotiki has taken over, music has been at best maybe two or three times and is in Hawaiian music totally. With regards to future plans for music, I'll let Mr. Monahan talk, I just didn't issue as well as any type of noise mitigation, et cetera.
We're planning to only have Hawaiian music. We, we haven't had music in the last three years. We did, we had two Hawaiian bands play when we first opened it in January of two thousand and twenty. That was it, and our restaurant hours right now, we close at nine, but I'm not sure where the noise complaints happen at ten o'clock or twenty o'clock. But the entire goal for this location is Hawaiian theme with Hawaiian music. We talked to Apono Red Duke to come over here after this sunset show. The concept is to create Hawaiian experience here. And the complaints, I'm not sure where the complaints are coming from.
So, Mr. Monahan, what time is your cutoff, what is your procedure, what time is your cutoff time for music?
The cutoff time for, for orders?
For music?
We haven't, we haven't had music.
What is your plan moving forward?
Final cutoff, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. And that's seven days a week?
No, we're only planning to have Hawaiian music two or three times a week.
Members, I would also point out, again, I reiterate that in the previous ten years, Kevin, what complaints I see to the hotel about its Hawaiian music that they play on their Thursdays, as well as currently Kotiki has not received, in that two or three times that they had music, has not received any complaints from the outside, from the general public, as well as the hotel manager.
I'm just quickly, your folks patio faces Kuhio Avenue, correct? I'm looking at your, your, the street map, and the patio itself, does it face Kuhio Avenue or Prince Edward Street?
It actually faces Prince Edward Street because the hotel structure is on the Kuhio's, having side of, of the pool area, we refer to that.
Okay, thank you.
And also there are several apartment buildings, I'll say low-rise apartment buildings, about four stories high, bordering with here on Prince Edward Street.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go any further, let me have Mr. Wright enter it for record. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, counting the gentleman that was just here. Multiple letters and signatures in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. However, the licensing supplemental investigative report does note a Rule three eighty-three fifty-seven point four issue with a certified mail return receipt for the neighborhood board notification. And for the record, a summary of the January thirteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hollinger prior to the public hearing.
Mr. Nishiyoka, do you guys have any other question?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Mr. Nishiyoka, can you clarify the footprint of the licensed premises? Because as I understand it, it should be eleven thousand one hundred square feet, but the lease indicates one thousand square feet.
Yeah, I think initially what happened was the initial request was to license the both premises and get the hotel license, but because of problems, well, because of the initial report from Investigator Perez, we changed the application to, just include the Kuhio area, which I think should be about, should be about, I think that's about eleven thousand, what you're talking about. I don't know, it could be, you know, if it was a smaller space than that.
Could I ask you a favor? Could you work with the landlord to either amend the lease or get a letter agreement stating the actual square footage of the licensed premises and submit it to Liquor?
Sure, assuming that would require the public to, as a contingency, things on the license that we can submit to requested documentation.
Yeah, it's the letter, Mr. Nishiyoka.
Fine, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two one five seven zero.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two zero dash two one five seven zero. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye. Application is approved, thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka.
Thank you, thank you, members of the chair of the commission.
Calling agenda item number two, application number two one dash two three four four zero from Corosco LLC, Mr. Luke.
Yes, may I record, we flag wind up, just cancel, the applicant, the applicant, Elizabeth T. is to my left. We have no changes to the investigative report. We have the operating temporary license, we have the second temporary license with no problems. And as I stated in preliminary hearing, we have resolved the issues presented in the initial report with Mr. Shinzato and the investigators.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the January thirteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hollinger prior to the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Luke or his client?
Motion to approve application number two one dash two three four four zero.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two three four four zero. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye. Application is approved, thank you, Mr. Luke.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number three, calling agenda, application number two two dash two three eight seven seven from B Concepts LLC, Mr. Kyuichi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission, Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. To my right is Bert Kawasaki, B U R T. Kawasaki will be the operator, his mother is partner along with him. Before Miss Ryberg reads into the record what she needs to, I know the commissioners wanted me to address, or my client to address, sound mitigation measures. So with the commission's permission, I'm gonna kind of explain to you what we're gonna do. First of all, this is the old Ryan's Park Place space. It's kind of blocked from the street because, you know, that building in front fully blocks it. And since I've been looking at the old Brew Moon space for a long time, I know that is wide open to the street. So this space only has a patio that faces the old Compadre space, so there is no patio along Alamoana. So what we've done is the outside patio area, the doors will be closed at all times, there will be no speakers going outside. And Mr. Kawasaki told me that the Howard Hughes has agreed that that's gonna be the smoking area, and that's all it's gonna be. So there's gonna be no music going outside. As far as the windows itself on the Alamoana side, they're gonna have the windows sealed shut to restrict, restrict the sound from going out that way. An additional measure is he's installed acoustic sound dampening tiles in the, for the entire drop ceiling, which should soak up some of the sound. So that would prevent the sound from going out. Now we're addressing the front. The front doors will be closed but unlocked at all times. If you remember, Ryan's left the doors wide open. We're not gonna do that for obvious reasons. Mr. Kawasaki has always operated this as a venue for mainly family parties. That's what he's done with his other two venues, and we're gonna continue to do that. So hopefully that addresses any concerns you have, and I'm more than willing to take questions on that.
Any questions, commissioners? Okay, well then, Ms. Wright, read into record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the January thirteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hollinger prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kyuichi or his client? I will say, Mr. Kyuichi, that thank you for your explanation and for the duties that you guys did perform. I know that this is, and the precautions that you guys have taken. I know this is a temporary location, and I can imagine it being, you know, just to, to, I guess, it's an investment as well.
It's, and it's a short-term investment because I've known for a while, because I had something with Howard Hughes, that they're knocking Ward Center down in two thousand and twenty-five. I've got another client license in the pipeline that's got a very different concept, but, you know, I'm fully sensitive to the issues with a cabaret license, and I think that's where the sound issues come from, so.
You guys will still be open just three days a week, Friday, Saturday?
That's the intent. The intent is not to open beyond that, that's, he doesn't have a market for family parties, you know, it might be open holidays.
I just have one question, Mr. Kyuichi.
Yes.
So I'm looking at your floor plan, and you folks are intending to include the outdoor patio area in the licensed premises. Is that just a precaution, or do you intend to provide service in that area?
We're gonna provide service in that area, but it's gonna be restricted to, for smoking purposes only, so we're not gonna open the doors, we're not gonna, people aren't gonna listen to entertainment. So the way that the concept runs is most of the party will be inside, so people, if they wanna smoke, will go out on the patio, and that's kind of what the idea is.
And they can take their beverage out there.
They can take their beverages out there, but in terms of having waitstaff out there, no, that's not the intention, so.
Okay, but you folks are gonna be actively monitoring, because it is part of the licensed premises.
Right, and the other thing I kind of failed to mention, the, what we gotta actively monitor frankly is when the place closes. And that's what we intend to do, because if you see the complaints that come in, it's when people mill around. And so Bert's been very good about that, but then Cook Street is very different than Ward Center. So that's one of the things that we put into the business plan, is that making sure, get people out, because the last thing you want them to do, you know, whether it's two or three o'clock in the morning, is milling outside and talking, because that thing carries. So we're aware of that, and that's what we're doing.
Just hold them down.
We'll figure something out.
Mr. Kyuichi, I do have a comment, and I appreciate you addressing the noise issue, but since I've been on the commission, I don't recall this commission approving a new cabaret license. And I think there's a general sentiment of the public to frown on new licenses that, licenses that close at four A M. My concern I want to raise in addition to what you've already addressed is overconsumption, because the idea being, there's a likelihood that patrons from other licensees that close at two A M. Will gravitate to the cabaret license at Ward Center. And I want to get a sense of how your client anticipates addressing overconsumption, preventing overconsumption.
The business model for Mr. Kawasaki's companies has always been more for family parties, so we don't open up, you know, beyond that. Although, you know, we gotta remain open to the public, it's mainly for private parties. How do you address overconsumption? I think that comes with staff training, so you're gonna have to train the staff to observe that. And if you look at Mr. Kawasaki's track record, which is in the investigative report, you'll see that he's got one COVID violation, he doesn't have anything else, and he's been very good about that. Yeah, in fact, the last cabaret license this commission issued was his on Cook Street, and that's because there's nothing else around. Do I have an expectation that this commission will issue any other cabaret licenses? Absolutely not, because I kind of get the message. But this is kind of an unusual situation, because Ward Center is gonna go away in three years, so when Bert first came to me with it, he and I sat through what, you know, what kind of parameters you gotta make sure to put in there. And I think the noise mitigation measures that the commission suggested the last time I think were good. So I, I don't think there's an expectation that it's gonna go beyond this. This is a very unique and different concept. So I understand what you're saying, because I have represented over my career probably all but two of the cabaret licenses, so I know exactly what you're talking about. The business is between one and four, not, not under type, so, but this is kind of a different business, so.
Thank you.
Commissioners, type of action, or any?
Motion, motion to approve application number two two dash two three eight seven seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two two dash two three eight seven seven. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye. Application is approved, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number four. Application number two two dash two four four two four from Park Event Services LLC. We have Mr. Nikoba.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. So with his entourage here.
Sorry, and two more actually on the Zoom. Good afternoon, Mr. Nikoba, representing Park Services. On to my left is Mr. Jay Park, sorry, P A R K. To my right, Mr. Ray Loh Jr., Ray Loh Jr. They are both from Park Services. Also on the Zoom is Emmanuel Zibakalam, Z I B A K A L A M, as well as Brooke Carroll, C A R R O L L. She is with HPU.
Okay, for the record, we do see Emmanuel Zibakalam on.
She was there. Did we lose her?
We are now looking for Brooke.
I am here.
Oh, okay, there we go, we have Brooke as well joining us. Okay, so we do have the two of them joining us, we're joined as well. Okay, so, Mr. Nikoba, you wanna go ahead and start?
Yes, we have two events, I'm sorry, we're taking both at the same time, correct?
We're taking just agenda item four for now.
Taking agenda four, I'm sorry, okay.
Were you gonna be speaking, or did you, were you having, were you, were you guys switching off to Emmanuel, or what's happening?
It's okay. I think Mr. Zibakalam is like, can I just sit and watch on Zoom?
Okay.
I'm sure he appreciates you saying that.
He's in a minivan.
We have our first event, I believe, is going to be the Ladies of the Eighties concert. It's going to be held on the regular stage. We are going to have various eighties groups. There will be twenty-one and over, so we won't have to worry about any aging inappropriate stuff happening.
And maybe you wanna walk us through your letter of explanation and, oh no, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker dropped it, it's for us, it's addressed to Mr. Nikoba. But maybe you wanna outline to us the difference in the difference of the venues.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. For starters. For starters, it's twenty-one and over, nobody eighteen till twenty allowed. It's for a entirely different demo. It's the Ladies of the Eighties, the Sheena Easton is the headliner, she's an old Prince act. The, the demo, again, is eighties, it's not geared towards teens into the, you know, the younger demo. The layout, actually, we've got HPD hired there, and then Rain Security is, we have them also retained for this, this event. The promoter of this event is a Big Ben Entertainment. We are the liquor servicing HPU, to be clear, on the arrangements on this, so. And then that's pretty, that's, that's pretty much it as far as the, this event is for entirely different, more mature demo.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicants, or Ms. Carroll, or Mr. Zibakalam, who is online as well?
Motion to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-two-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-two-four. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna call agenda item number five, application number two-two dash two-four-four-three-two from Park Event Services LLC. Mr. Nikova, please introduce yourself and your clients again.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Devin Nikova, representing Park Event Services. To my left, Mr. Jay Park, and to my right, Mr. Ray Leno, Jr. They are with Park Services. Also on the Zoom is Mr. Emmanuel Zibakalam, Z.I.B.A.K.A.L.A.M. He is also helping on this event with Park Services, and also Brooke Carroll, C.A.R.R.O.L.L. She is with HPU. This event is for the birthday bash, the return of the birthday bash. I know, I'm very excited too. Many different groups, again, the, the age range is gonna be twenty-one and over. We are looking at the similar amount of police, similar amount of security. Again, this is geared more toward a older range of clients, so, sorry.
Okay, we gotta clear some inconsistencies, Mr. Nikova.
I'm sorry.
Your request is from five P.M. to eleven fifty-nine P.M.
Yes.
However, your license application says from five P.M. to eleven thirty P.M.
Oh.
And your landlord consent says from five P.M. to eleven fifteen P.M. So what's gonna happen?
I, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the past, we got, one of the investigators told us that we should extend the license after, past the time, because if people are still drinking, even though we stopped service. So we stopped service at eleven fifteen, but the show ends at eleven thirty. So he, he suggests to extend the license past the end of the show, just as people walk out, if like eleven thirty-five.
So that from eleven fifteen to eleven fifty-nine is gonna be the cleanup time?
Is the cleanup time, yes, correct, yes.
And eleven thirty is when the entertainment stops?
Correct, correct.
Got it, okay.
So we were told to just license it to eleven fifty-nine to clear that way, just in case the walkway out, yeah.
So that you guys can make sure that all of the containers and everybody is finished consuming before the time period ends?
Correct.
Okay. We do have Brooke Carroll online as well, too, who is consenting as landlord for HPU, so in the event that...
Yeah, Ms. Carroll, you're okay with that arrangement, that service would end at eleven fifteen, music stops at eleven thirty, and everything cleared out and cleaned up by eleven fifty-nine?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have some clarification questions as well, Mr. Nikova. So I understand this is, this event's for two days.
Correct, yeah.
So if I looked at the page two of the investigation report, the estimated attendance is four thousand people. Is that per night or total?
Per night.
And then, so the same, similar question, the number of security personnel, thirty-two security, ten special duty, per night?
Correct, per night, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I will note for the record that this is Mr. Ho's direct event, that they will be solely in charge of this event?
Yes, correct.
Motion to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-three-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-three-two. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thanks, gentlemen, thanks, ladies, all right.
Here's the birthday bash, that's quite early.
All righty, moving on. Calling agenda item number six, application number two-two dash two-four-four-five-two from St. Louis School. Mr. Gonzalez.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, I've submitted a nonprofit special license application for St. Louis School's fifteenth annual greatest theme. We are on our campus on Saturday, August twenty-third, from five to eight, and we're on from five to nine P.M. The event also includes scholarships and various programs at St. Louis School. It's a wine and a, a wine and beer will be served at the event. It's also a food dinner served to all of our, all of the people in attendance. Complimentary Uber and taxi gonna be available for, I guess. Also secured three special duty police officers to help produce the event.
So, Mr. Gon- Gonzalez, I've had the pleasure of attending this event for the past five years. I've noticed that the location has changed, however, so what is your capacity in the, in the gym?
We're setting that up for foreign people now, for the, to be in attendance. But the gym can hold much more than that, the gym can hold easily five hundred, five hundred and fifty people in there, in that little set. In the bleachers, obviously, it can hold close to fifty, maybe.
Motion to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-five-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-five-two. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, you then?
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number seven, transfer application number two-two dash two-four-zero-five-nine from Hooked Can Ghost LLC. Ms. Melchior.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Robin Melchior, behalf of the applicant Hooked Can Ghost LLC. And with me via Zoom is also Chase Brown, a member of the applicant. We have reviewed the report, and I would like to make a comment, expect to a statement made in the opinion section. It states that it appears that the business has been transferred prior to commission approval was obtained. And I just wanted to let you know that they didn't open until the commission approved the services agreement back in November of twenty-twenty-one. So no liquor was served prior to the approval of the services agreement.
So noted, Ms. Melchior. Any other corrections or any comments?
No.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Melchior or her client?
There are no questions. Motion to approve transfer application number two-two dash two-four-zero-five-nine.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, to approve application number two-two dash two-four-zero-five-nine. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number two-one dash two-three-two-seven-zero from H-Mart Kakao Uncle LLC. Mr. Wong.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Thomas Wong, here with H-Mart. We have reviewed, we have reviewed the, we have no changes or comments.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Wong, or type of action?
Motion to approve application number two-one dash two-three-two-seven-zero.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-three-two-seven-zero. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number two-two dash two-three-seven-seven-four from Cafe WBE LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair members, Diana Tumana, the legal attorney, Betty Fuller, as a patient to applicant Hallie Nguyen, Cafe WBE LLC. We have no changes to the investigative report, with the exception of direct your attention to the sampling application that was submitted, submitted on August twenty-fifth, forty-four.
I'm sorry, can you state that correction one more time? I'm sorry.
Yes, there was a sampling application that was submitted together with the license application.
Sorry, what, are you referring to the investigative report? What page are you referring to?
I'm, I'm, it's actually not only investigative, investigative report, it's not included in the report. So I would like to direct your attention to that application that was submitted.
So, ma'am, if you sub, if you submitted a separate application, then that will be reviewed separately on the agenda. So this is for a retail general license application, application number two-two dash two-three-seven-seven-four. Is, is what has been agendized today, so that's all that we will be taking under consideration for this agenda item. If, if you submitted another application, you can follow up with the office during normal business hours to find out the status of that application.
Understood, thank you.
All right, so we're taking under consideration application number two-two dash two-three-seven-seven-four.
Any questions, type of action?
Ms. Millionaire, the owner, you're gonna be the operator as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have any liquor sale or service experience?
Uh, no, I have not.
Are you going to be hiring anybody that has, has experience in the service and sale of alcohol?
Yes, I will plan to be. Yes, I, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve application number two-two dash two-three-seven-seven-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-two dash two-three-seven-seven-four. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number ten, request number two-one dash two-two-seventy-five from Senia LLC. Mr. Wong.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, Neil Bota, appearing on behalf of Senia LLC. Appearing with me is Catherine Novara, an owner, with no changes to the investigative report.
Commissioners, any questions from Mr. Wong or his client?
Um, you folk, the, the new member manager is a forty percent owner, correct?
Correct.
And that's Menagerie Hospitality LLC. Has a member of hospitality, of Menagerie Hospitality LLC gone, done a, gone through the criminal history and background check that we require for new applications, or, or no?
Menagerie Hospitality was already a member and was vetted with the initial application. This change has increased, Menagerie's percentage increased. So I wanna say, yes, they were vetted when this application was initially filed.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification and for the record. Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seventy-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seventy-five. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. I mean, sorry, request is approved, thank you, Mr. Bota.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling agenda item number eleven, request number two-two dash two-four-four-six-eight from Honolulu Museum of Arts. Mr. Chu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. You, Chu, on behalf of the Honolulu Museum of Art, who also appearing is Todd Ninoza, who is the Chief Financial Officer of the museum. This request is actually a renewal of a previously granted waiver of filing certain documents at the cap of trustees.
And, um, Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Can you, can you state for the record that none of the new directors or officers have committed a felony in the last, I don't know, ever?
That's, that's correct. Um, I did have, Ms. Ninoza confirmed that. They, they do have a process with twenty-four trustees, and every year, the trustees sign a declaration that they have not committed any felonies. Trustees are vetted internally before they are asked to join. It's a very, very established institution at Honolulu. Museum was established in nineteen seventy-one, and really provides a great public service of all types. Cafe was created in nineteen sixty-nine, and I, probably the date of alcohol service and licensing was, is definitely pretty extreme, but we had no real negative incidents.
Yes, we're, we're very familiar with the, with the Honolulu Museum of Art, and we appreciate everything the folks do to impact our, our community. So I'm taking that, go ahead.
Mr. Chu, it's not clear to me if the request is for a permanent waiver. What's your position on that?
Well, we would, I think the first request was granted for three years. We weren't sure if that was a policy, as we only grant them three-year increments, it's really uncharted territory, but I would ask for a permanent waiver if the commission would still apply.
I personally would be more comfortable if there was some time limitation, and your client could come back at the end of that limitation. I'm okay with five-year period, would that work for you?
Yes, Ms. Ninoza, do you have any objections for five-year period?
Five years with, with the wonderful, and also just confirming, you know, that we do confirm that are all our trips. So I'm, it's only conditions, and we actually have a limited, a limited, okay, on board, and one year, there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-six-eight for a five-year term.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-six-eight for a five-year term. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling agenda item number twelve, request number two-two dash two-four-four-eight-seven from Ferguson Irish Pub LLC. Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rai. Chairman, Commissioners, Don Murphy, Ferguson Irish Pub.
Welcome, Mr. Murphy.
Nice to see everybody again, finally.
We need it all. And I, this is for St. Patty's, correct?
Yes, well, it's, for instance, for the, the outside area for a year, for the outside staff and St. Patrick's Day as well.
Okay.
If I recall correctly, the extended premises are used only on a case-by-case for private function, things of that nature?
Yeah, pretty much, except for right, the very outside, if it's a nice night and everything, we'll have a few people out there, but generally, it's pretty much special occasions.
Courtyard area.
Right, according to him.
Any problems in the last year?
No, boy, I haven't used in the last two years, so, but no problems there.
Motion to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-eight-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-eight-seven. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, request is approved. Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number two-two dash two-four-four-eighte from Murphy's Inc., DBA, Murphy's Bar and Grill. Mr. Murphy, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon again, Don Murphy, Murphy's Bar and Grill.
And this is for the other premises that you folks have, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, motion to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-eighte.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-two dash two-four-four-eighte. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, request is approved, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Hope to see you again soon.
Chair, motion to approve the adoption of decision in order for agenda items fourteen to thirty inclusive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the adoption of decision in order for agenda items fourteen to thirty. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, the adoption of decision in order for agenda items fourteen and through thirty is approved. Okay, going into adjudication, Harry. Mr. Jacob?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Corporation Counsel, on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu.
Okay, let's call our first agenda item, calling agenda item number thirty-one, Cafe Gang.
Okay, let's call our first agenda item, calling agenda item number thirty-one, Cafe Gangnam Hareok. Miss Kim.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, and I'm Chair and Commissioner, my name's James Kim, um, representative of Cafe Gangnam Hareok.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about January seventeenth, twenty twenty, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time record entries at the time, and his employees, Amea Higa, James Kim, Kelo Okahapani, Uviio, Ivy Ka, and John Sung Pan, reported on duty and/or when the employees went off duty in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four sub B of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Miss Kim, how would you like to plead?
Um.
You can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest?
Yes, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-one. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, no contest plea is accepted. Mister Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I'll note that the licensee did receive a warning on November second, two thousand and eighteen.
Miss Kim, this has to do with, um, your employees' time records, so what happened?
Um. Um, actually, there's no excuse. It was totally my fault, there's not good, um, that was, uh, very beginning of the, um, pandemic, so, um, we was, I, I, we was closed for a while, and that was the very beginning of being open, so, um, our, uh, one of the system managers, she was about to, um, manage all the employees for, um, the time point.
Okay.
Totally, um, there's, uh, because this quarter had all.
Alright, so the problem has been corrected, are your time cards now accurate?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for agenda item thirty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for agenda item number thirty-one. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty-one. Thank you, Miss Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-two, Campbell Stock and Shop. Nice, sir. You can take your mask off if you would like. Alright, can you repeat yourself, please?
Uh, the first name is Young, last name is Lee.
Mister Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and/or during the period between April fifteenth, twenty twenty, and October thirtieth, twenty twenty, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee without commission approval transferred to another entity, the licensed business, for which the licensee's license was issued, either openly or under an undisclosed, any undisclosed arrangement whereby such other person came into possession or control of the business or took any partner association, associate in violation of section two-eight-one dash forty-one sub H of the Hawaii Revise Statutes.
Mister Lee, how would you like to plead?
Okay.
How would you like to plead? You can accept the charge?
Yeah, I just.
You accept, okay. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the plea for agenda item number thirty-two. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the plea is accepted for thirty-two. Uh, Mister Jacob, your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mister Lee, you have any comment?
Oh, no question.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved, um, moved and second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty-two. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the five hundred-dollar penalty will be imposed. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-three, Champ's Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant. Mister Keuch.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Keuch, for the licensee, waiving and charging and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-three. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mister Jacob.
This violation occurred on Ju- June eleventh, where an audit report demonstrated that the licensee purchased liquor from an entity or person other than a licensed wholesaler. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mister Keuch.
Um, I'm gonna give you kind of a long explanation, that's okay, because this, um, is kind of an unfortunate thing. So, this was discovered in an audit, so the auditor went to Champ's accountant, Terry Kunsaku, and noticed that Terry Kunsaku had a journal entry that showed a purchase from Tamours, which is not gonna be a lot, except that Miss Kunsaku could not find the receipt, and it was a credit card charge of about a hundred seventy-one dollars. So, I've actually talked to both the manager and the owner about this, so, apparently, it sounds like somebody went over to Tamours, which is right across the street from Champ's, might have bought something for one of the owners, and left the invoice and sent it over to Miss Kunsaku, then booked it. So, if it's a mistake, it's still a mistake, because she booked it as part of the sales. They may not have used the alcohol, because the common sense argument I would make is, why would you buy from Tamours when it's cheaper from the wholesalers? But, the reason, I talked to the owner and said, you know, probably should plead no contest, is because that's still a violation, because it's booked as a purchase, and the purchase is from a retailer, not a wholesaler. So, uh, thank you for indulging my long-winded explanation, but that's what, because I don't want you to think that the Champ's guys on something like this are just diligent, um, you know, and I did take a while, because I could go talk to the managers and the owners to make sure that I got the, the right situation, so.
Thank you, Mister Keuch. Uh, motion to, uh, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty-three. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the five hundred-dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Keuch. Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Club Boomerang.
Hi, uh, please state your name for the record.
Uh, my name, uh, Richard Teal, come from Club Boomerang.
Do you can spell your last name, please?
Teal.
Stop.
T.E.A.L.
Thank you, and you are the owner?
Yes.
You're the owner, okay. Uh, Mister Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about March fourteenth, twenty twenty, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee permitted liquor of any kind while in a bottle, glass, or other container to be open and readily consumable within the license premise before or after the hours established by the Liquor Commission to an approximately zero-two-two-zero hours in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two-zero sub B of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead? Oh, you can admit to the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
At the first time, uh, I cannot explain.
You can have a chance to explain after you enter plea, so you need to admit, deny, or plead no contest to the charge.
I don't know.
Um, also for the record, can we also get your guests to enter in their appearances once the trial's later? Hi, who are you?
Jasmine Teal, I'm her daughter.
You're her daughter?
Yeah.
Okay. Jasmine, how do you spell your last name?
T.E.A.L., with the color.
Alright. Okay, so you are going to admit, deny, or plead no contest?
So she's gonna deny, she said.
If you're going to deny the charge, then we will need to reschedule you for a contested case here. To where you, you will be able to state your case, and then we will make a decision. If you would like to have the matter settled today, you can admit to the charge or plead no contest. No contest is not an admission of guilt.
Um, may I explain to why?
You can explain after you enter a plea. Okay.
I think come next time. Yeah, she, she's gonna deny.
Okay, um. Alright. Since you have pled not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the Commission requires you to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, because we are, we are proceeding with remote adjudication hearings, each party's exhibit must be uploaded to the Liquor Commission's Google Drive by four P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the Liquor Commission's website. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the Liquor Commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Miss Teal, do you understand the requirements for the contested case hearing?
Uh, are you guys gonna send me the, uh, information when I leave here?
It's contained in the letter.
Okay.
So, well, in honest opinion, we don't know what to do in this type of situation, because she just kinda wants to explain herself, so I don't know if the best way.
We are, we are not, we are not, um, we are not allowed to advise you as to what to do.
Okay.
Um, you know, it, it, like I said, after she enters a plea, she will have an opportunity to explain what happened.
Okay, so may I answer?
Unless if the plea is a not guilty plea, in which case, then we need to proceed with an actual contested hearing, where she, it's almost like a court, uh, proceeding.
Like the court proceeding.
Okay, if I plead, um, guilty, and how much you gonna be charged to fine?
We can go through the procedure, and I believe that the prosecutor may have already notified you of what his recommendation is going to be.
Chair, Chair, I'll, I'll say, um, there, there's another core deputy taking over, I think he contacted this licensee. I, I will represent that my recommended fine in the event of a plea of not gu- or guilty or no contest would be, uh, seven hundred dollars.
So if we do no contest, can we do no contest with explanation?
Yes, of course, that's what I have stated several times.
Okay.
Then I can change the screen to why it happened?
No, if you say no contest, 지금 그렇게 얘기해도 돼. Okay, so she wants to do no contest.
Okay, so you would like to change your plea?
Yes.
We, um, make a motion, Madam Chair, Miss Jasmine Teal?
Yes.
Uh, the record's probably not reflecting, you are interpreting or translating for your mother?
Yes.
And she understands her options?
She, yes.
And she, in light of her understanding, she wishes to change her plea to no contest?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, um, motion to accept a no contest plea for agenda item thirty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and second to, um, accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-four. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mister Jacob, your recommendation again, please.
This violation occurred on March fourteenth, twenty twenty, investigators found alcohol being served at two-twenty A M. This is licensee's first violation, their base recommended, uh, recommendation fine is five hundred dollars, plus ten dollars for every ten minutes, or every minute after two A M, uh, for a total of seven hundred dollars.
Can you explain to her what people just said? Is there any? Go ahead, go ahead.
Any chance, because this is, I'm not saying to, uh, alcohol after hours, this is my work hour. That's why I, I just try to explain to you guys, after two-twenty, after two probably closed, and my, uh, workers done that they shift in front of, um, washing, like a big, so, uh, glass, and then before they go home, and they just turn the one shot that they're gonna drink it, and that time, the liquor commission come, they coffee. That's why, uh, I tried to, uh, play for my heat, I'm not trying to stay for any alcohol after hours.
We understand, um, but because it was after hours, so, that's not allowed. So your, your, um, your worker, I understand, I used to work in a restaurant, I understand having a long shift and wanting to have a drink after your shift, but that is against the rules to have it on the license premises after hours. And so maybe you can advise them to go someplace else, somebody's house, or someplace that is still open for their service. But, that's not allowed under the rules. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred dollars. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, the seven hundred-dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty-four. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Miss Teal, thank you, Miss Keuch. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-five, Club Spotlight. Mister Keuch.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Keuch, for the licensee. We'd like to continue this, um, for three, or, let's suggest next available, this will not be a, uh, contested hearing. So, uh, I just need to get the report, talk to the client, and then probably enter no contest place for next available.
Uh, Mister Jacob, any objection?
No, no objection.
Thank you. Uh, motion to continue, agenda item thirty-five to the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved and second to continue, agenda item number thirty-five to the next available date. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, treble's eye, agenda item thirty-five will be continued to the next available date. Thank you, Mister Keuch.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-six, the Night Club. Miss Jo Miaschero, yes?
Hi, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Uh, Jo Miaschero, uh, Operations Director for the Night Club.
Any objections? Uh, Mister Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about January fourth, twenty twenty, at two-ten A M in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and/or primary, primary entrances to the license premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises in violation of Rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Jo Miaschero, how would you like to plead? No contest. Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the no contest plea. It's been moved in second to accept a no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-six. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on January fourth, twenty twenty, at two ten A M. Investigators found nine customers and three employees behind locked doors. First violation for the licensee, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Ms. Miaschiro, any explanation?
So this was our second day of opening. And so we were closed, so we just locked the door, not realizing that it was against the rules to lock the door. Just because we were closed, so we understand that we have to do that.
Thank you. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
It's been moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-six. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number thirty-six. Thank you, Ms. Miaschiro. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number thirty-seven, Not Ramen Bar Incorporated.
Kiu, yeah.
Ramen Bar Incorporated, sorry. Do you have anyone up here for agenda item thirty-seven?
If Mr. Luke has left, I know I spoke to him about this case. Um, he had asked for a month continuance. I do not have an objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-seven for one month.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty-seven for one month. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, agenda item thirty-seven will be continued for a month. Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, Short Farm.
Hi, I'll, I'll, I'll be with her by present operation, Short Farm.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about December thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee was found to have made physical alterations within its licensed premises to wet installation of a stage without the prior written approval of the Liquor Commission in violation of Rule three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two sub A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Wilchire, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-eight. Mr. Jacob. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob, your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Wilchire, any comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what he said, what he recommended.
Um, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Do you have any comment?
Uh, no, we accept it. Uh, we read my report, the next week, thirty-two, or not.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty-eight. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, Science Square Authentic Thai Cuisine. Mr. Nakamura.
Yes. Um, good afternoon, members and chairman. This is Derek Nakamura on behalf of Science Square. And to my right is my principal, Chanina John-John, the majority holder at Science Square.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about January thirty-first, twenty twenty, and/or during the period between January thirty-first, twenty twenty, and February fourth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to obtain approval from the commission in writing prior to, prior to any change in ownership of twenty-five percent or more of the stock or any change in ownership resulting in the transferee becoming the owner of twenty-five percent or more of the outstanding stock in violation of Section two eight, one dash forty-one sub I of the Hawaii Revice Statutes.
Mr. Nakamura, how would you like to plead?
I will pay no contest. Uh, we'd like to give a short explanation.
Of course, of course. Uh, motion to accept a no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-nine. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob, your recommendation?
This violation occurred when a share of thirty-eight point three nine percent was transferred without approval. Licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, Mr. Nakamura, go ahead.
Yeah, we'd like to explain that, um, Ms. Janina tried to do the paperwork on her own. She didn't know there was a deadline. She submitted paperwork and was a little over, um, a month late. She's sorry for that. She's a rather sophisticated businesswoman and she didn't forgive herself for that mistake.
Thank you for that representation. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Nakamura. Calling agenda item number forty, Sunflower Lounge.
Again, good afternoon, members of the commission. Pete Peo, chief of Sunflower Lounge. This licensee just called me Wednesday. We are gonna take her on. She is part of client of Melrose, a colleague, which is George Young, which is his old office. So we would ask that it be continued at next available.
No objection, chair.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item forty to the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number forty to the next available date. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the agenda item forty will be continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number forty-one, Zexi, Zexi, Zizinchan. No, uh, Sheshuan, Sheshuan.
Zechuan.
Zex, Zex.
Zechuan. Uh, again, good afternoon, members of the commission. Pete Peo, chief of the, for the licensee. Zechuan is a type of Chinese cuisine, just so you're curious. Um, we would waive reading of the charge ahead of plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item forty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number forty-one. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, where investigators found incomplete tracing logs. The last entry that was discovered was in June thirteenth and somewhere incomplete. This did result in a twenty-four hour shutdown. It's licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Yeah, manager made a mistake. He told him to stop taking contact tracing. This is back in twenty-one, right? So it was still required. Um, I talked to Mr. Zhang, who's the majority owner. He apologizes. He's since talked to his manager.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi. Calling agenda item number forty-two, Queen Capilani Hotel. Mr. Who?
Honorable Chair and Committee, my name is Charles J. Hunter, Chair, Madam J. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Uh, Mr. Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor, about December nineteenth, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Fernando Castro in a section of the licensed premise where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the Liquor Commission in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five sub A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Who, how would you like to plead?
No contest. That's our mistake, so I, you know, I will give the charges.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item forty-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number forty-two. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob, your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Who, any additional comments?
Uh, no.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number forty-two. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, the three hundred and fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number forty-two. Calling agenda item number forty-three, Queen Capilani Hotel. Mr. Who, please introduce yourself again.
Uh, my name is Jeff Who, under the government.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob, the charge.
Honor, about March tenth, twenty twenty, at approximately twenty-one forty-three hours in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee permitted entertainment, which caused complaints from the public or reports from the commission's investigators indicating that sounds emanating from the licensed premises caused undue disturbance, which disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood in violation of Rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh three sub B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Who, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item forty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number forty-three. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob.
This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. However, the licensee did receive a warning on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Mr. Jacob, do you have any additional information about what caused the disturbance?
I believe this case arose when two individuals complained about noise emanating from the licensed premise. Investigators arrived on the scene, took video of the, um, of the premises with noise included, and that was at twenty-one forty-three hours.
Alright, Mr. Who, any, um, comment?
Because our neighbor is running that, uh, maybe around fifty to seventy, you know, feet away. And we had a wedding party at our, on the high end. There was a nine forty three P M. It's not even that yet. So you, it was a lot. Then I wanna know what was the, you know, the noise level. And, you know, that's what I asked the prosecutor. And can you please tell me what was the noise level? And you wanna, you know, give us a citation. So if there was two inspectors were there, then why didn't they come measurement?
Alright, so you were, um, you said no contest to the charge, but you were saying that you think that this might have been, um, a mistake or you, you, you not sure what, how, how the violation occurred?
Yes, you know, I, I put in no contest because I don't wanna, you know, have an, an allegation, you know, to deal. However, I just wanna express our situation. And to me is if the inspector take a reading and this is the reading numbers and you guys violated it, it's more preoccupied than I can accept it. But if there's no reading and they just pick the videos, if they can pick the video, why didn't they pick the videos? That's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Who.
Thank you.
Motion is to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item forty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand. Any objections?
Yes, Chair, I would have imposed a reprimand.
Commissioner Miaschiro's comment, please, for the record, and he is opposed to the letter of reprimand. I just felt, okay, you're moving. Um, it's been, it's been moved in second. Um, any objection, we've noted, it's been issued, one objection, correct. Um.
Letter of reprimand.
I'm sorry, point, point of order.
You're issuing a letter of reprimand. You're voting on the issuance of a letter of reprimand. The vote, so to speak, was three with one lodging his dissent.
No, if I vote, if I vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As though we are in a two-two at that point. There'll be no action taken?
Right. I mean, you would have to, uh, come up with a penalty of some sort. You would have to go back for another penalty recommendation.
Okay, um. Um, let the record reflect, chair votes aye, um, to issue a letter of reprimand.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Who, about that. Let's like pick up here. You kind of threw us in for a little bit, but, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
So a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number forty-three. I would have, however, highly suggest you try to keep the noise down.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, calling agenda item number forty-four, Agave and Wine, Agave LLC. And here at this point, Commissioner Miaschiro is gonna take over leading the contest. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Charles Jewitt, owner, operator, Agave and Wine LLC.
Mr. Jewitt, um, just so we're clear, if I recall, when we first called this matter and put it in that place?
Uh, just inform this probably easier and better to be non, no contest with explanation, no?
I, I want you to do it easier and better. I want you to do what you feel is proper.
Wait, that's, uh, no contest with explanation.
Okay. Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item forty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number forty-four. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This violation occurred on October second, twenty twenty. Investigation was prompted by a complaint received on the COVID-nineteen information hotline. Upon arrival to the licensed facility, investigators noticed that they were operating as a bar in violation of the mayor's order. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Jewitt. Comments or explanation?
A lot, but let's just start with simply. Um, it was all new to us. All of this was new to everybody, including the commissioners and the commission. We opened three months prior and were open exactly like we were for two months. Liquor Commission, NHPD, together and separate, came in almost every day, complaints. One person was complaining. It was again and again and again. Some had, I got my private number, called me and said, I'm gonna shut you down. You're in violation. And I'm like, hey, who is this's private number? I'm not telling you that. I'm just telling you, I know the rules. You're getting shut down. Whatever. It's not my first go down. Liquor Commission said every time, you're fine. You're good. Am I operating correctly under what you guys see? They're like, yes, you are. My liquor license covers the entire food hall. My thought process, okay, they're serving food out there. I'm serving liquor out there. There's certain food in my place. My sales were probably five percent of the entire food hall. And I was again and again told by Liquor Commission that I was fine, that I was operating correctly. Everything else is great. Six feet apart, my contact tracing was fine, mask worn, no parties over five. I don't know what else I could have done. And then investigator Fontaine came in. She called, talked to my sister, called Supervisor Sato, who then sent her on her phone, um, the plan. She says, your liquor license stops at the counter, which is what I was originally told by Liquor Commission to do. They didn't want alcohol in these other places. So I said, fine. She said, well, that makes you illegal, operating improperly, you're closed. I don't know what else I could have done.
Mr. Jacob, any comment?
I'll note that this did result in a twenty-four hour shutdown. Investigators found two air fryers at the establishment, but the food that was seen eating was from the outs, outside the licensed premises.
Mr. Jewitt, I have a recollection that you licensed the entire Yonai food court, Sweden area?
Yes, everything indoors is under my license. Also, my outdoor area is under my license as well.
And the, um...
But a food doesn't act, I mean, so you share this courtyard with other establishments?
With nine restaurants.
Right. And those restaurants, then, so when you were saying that you're self-accomplished five percent, I think this is having to do with that you weren't selling food at the time, were you?
I was also selling food. Just in case, because they were being forced to close a little early. We're like, and open an hour afterwards. I figured, well, it's an hour. I better make sure I've got food. People sitting down, all had that food, they had food. They could eat it. They come in, they come out. If, I don't know, I don't know, I'll explain it. I was, I was kind of lost. I didn't know if I was in the right in the first place until I was told repeatedly by investigators that I was. And then I was told, and again, it was new to everybody. So when a supervisor came in and said, okay, well, I don't agree with that, after checking Sato, I was closed twenty-four hours. It was not a twenty-four hour closure because it became a two-week closure, I think. And then after that, it became a three-and-a-half month closure.
I wanna make motion to show the reprimands, if I could, a second?
Second. All second.
It's been moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number four. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes aye, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number forty-four. Thank you, Mr. Jewitt, for coming in. Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number forty-five, Liquor Administrator, that is state of update. Ms. Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Ma, Madam Chairman, commissioners. Uh, I sort of, uh, dropped a synopsis of the bills that have survived crossover, that we are tracking, uh, actively in the weekly report. I don't have anything else to add. We're now down to roughly like eleven bills, which is a, a great deal more manageable than what we started out with.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ryan. Uh, agenda item number forty-six, Liquor Administrator, Mr. Picaro.
Good evening. On, on March sixth, the Department of Human Resources posted a job vacancy for our liquor control investigators. And, uh, we were allowed to change the minimum qualifications that allows individuals who have a two-year or four-year degree for criminal justice to apply for this. Uh, administrative services officer and chief investigator, who's working with D H R approximately two years, to be finally out of school.
That's great news, Mr. Picaro. So that's gonna help us with our recruitment as far as getting, we're hoping that we'll be able to get more liquor investigators, um, hired here at the, at the commission, right?
That is true.
Okay. Any other matters, Mr. Picaro?
That's it. Thank you.
Hearing no other matters, I'm meeting with Dr.